Community activities at large. Um. That comes here. No question.
Sometimes the parade started on fourth of July.
Especially if you want to know children there and not.
I think it all do it up.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Planning Commission is strong.
Planning Commission met first day June twelve and today. On June twelve, an application by Total Action Against Poverty in Roanoke Valley for approval of a conditional use permit will allow a daycare center to operate in the garden level of Lexington City Schools office at three hundred Diamond Street owned by Lexington City Schools. And this will come before council at our July meeting. Then a request from Francesco Benapassa to amend the zoning ordinance will allow internally illuminated canopy sign in the C one and C two zoning districts was denied by a vote of four to two. Those voting against the application felt more time needed to research the limit on the luminance for the bulbs, the size of the letters, height requirement of a canopy, and acceptable location for this type of sign. Also, the architectural review board reviewed the ordinance amendment as courtesy of the planning commission, and it was not in favor of allowing this type of sign. And this will come before council at our August seventh meeting. Then we looked at the governance chapter of the comprehensive plan. Then we viewed that, see how what our status is, how we've been doing on the progress of that. And today, the planning commission heard the presentation by Jeremy Crute of the Sunken Shin and Goa Planning District Commission regarding the comprehensive plan update. And they're gonna lead us through the process of the update. He put together a good plan, and that should start right away. Then we're hoping to finish that by the end of the new calendar year. And also, it was brought up, and Jeremy had mentioned it before, that starting July one, that the review of site plans and plaques for boundary line adjustments, that'll become administrative, so that will not go to planning commission and council like it has in the past. And so I had reported before when we were talking about the W N L master plan, that what their next project is, it sounds like it's gonna be the admin, what is it, the admissions, yeah, admissions and financial building at the corner of Washington Lane. I had said that we would see that next step would be that we would review the site plan, but since that clause passed, we will not review the site plan. Arnie will take care of that and do it administratively. That's all I have.
Um, two questions for you. One, relative to the site plan. You have Washington Lee, their master plan, and we approved that.
Right.
They're not to, what impact does that have on the process?
Really none. I mean, it'll be faster, actually. I think that there's actually a shorter timeframe now for us to review, is it software, review site plans now that it's administrative. So really shouldn't have any impact from, for either the city or for Washington Lee. From our perspective, we're really just supposed to look and make sure that it meets the requirements, it goes through, that you, when the fire chief will review it, police department, all different areas will review it, just make sure that there's access for everything. It really is an administrative process. And what is interesting was when we did our zoning updating two thousand seventeen, it originally was supposed to be an administrative process. A member of the committee brought it up that we had had an issue with a project out in the past. And they felt that they were more comfortable if it would go through the planning commission, just that have a second set of eyes look at it. And so we changed that voluntarily. So I don't think there shouldn't be any downside to.
Yeah, but there's the fact of having a master plan. Maybe it was on term, but Washington Lee, the hospital, or two, they have a footprint and we look at review.
Right.
Does that go away?
No, we'll still do the, we'll still do the master plan. Yeah, that part won't change. And this is just a smaller piece of it. We, they've already presented their designs and all that, and it's to look at some of the nitty gritty details of where trash pickup is and all that. Tell me if I'm saying anything that's wrong, that's my understanding.
The master plan, I believe, is part of the zoning for the property. Zoning stays all yours. You can't even give it away if you wanted to. But site plans and subdivision class, basically the engineered civil drawings that don't let those losses come to council, right?
Which, not being an engineer, probably doesn't understand as much, and it's good to be an administrative function. Very good. Said two questions.
I'll be here all night with you.
You have the right to send back to. Any other questions for Ms. Strong on the planning commission? Regional tourism board, Mr. Betts.
Sure. Lease negotiations, lease negotiations for the Lexington visitor center continue. Rockbridge Regional Tourism is currently waiting here for bright speed. At this time, we have a month to please based on previous lease terms. BA two fifty on July eleventh, twenty twenty five, from eight AM to ten, ten AM. There'll be kickoff event at Hampton Inn to facilitate public awareness about BA two bit. Budget, the Rockbridge Regional Tourism Board approved a balanced budget for F Y twenty six at our meeting on June eighteenth, twenty twenty five. And we have new board member, the Rockbridge Regional Tourism Board, welcome to Megan McDaniel, who's our newest board member. She will be representative of the city of Lexington on the regional tourism board. She had extensive, extensive experience in hotel operations and management, including as a.
I'm currently the general manager of. Hold on a second. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Betts?
Is any of the budget, because I think the budget exceeds a million dollars this year. Will, and that, of course, it's grown about thirty percent in the last four or five years. Will any of that be put away for a rainy day? Because I think tourism had intentionally been building up
A reserve fund.
A reserve fund. Just wondering if.
My understanding is no, but I could guarantee that. I will, I will, I can double check on that though.
Well, the Raro staff has been incredibly busy, also getting incredible support from Lexington Public Works, who are MVPs in their own right. Brubaker Field, Fox Field over at Brubaker Park has hosted an invitational tournament at the beginning of June, a district twelve and under tournament for the district four. And starting July second, we will host twenty seven baseball games in four days. Sixteen teams, only one of which is from Rockbridge County. Fifteen other teams, two from Arlington, Williamsburg, Winchester, Herndon, Pulaski. Whatever. Sixteen total teams, including only one local, will descend on Rockbridge County and play twenty seven games in four days. That is doing our part for tourism. That's the Raro staff, that's volunteers, that's just phenomenal for our area. And all the thanks goes to Chad Coffey, Daryl Plogger, Christine Clancy. I cannot say enough about our awesome staff and Public Works, because what the city of Lexington has done in the last twelve to eighteen months at Brubaker Field with the enhancements of both of our baseball diamonds and salt, I mean, they have multipurpose. We should be proud of what we have here, and we're gonna show it off to all of these out of town folks. So kudos to those staff. I'm gonna miss the bike parade on July fourth because I'm serving concessions on July fourth from nine to eleven. So if anyone wants concessions on July fourth at nine AM in the morning, I'm your guy. But it is a team effort to host these massive tournaments when you play twenty seven games in four days. And so you will see out of town folks here for these baseball tournaments. You're gonna see our Raro kids rocking their jerseys and their hats and our coaches that are awesome. And remember, I mentioned that our games will be hosted on three W Z radio, which is really kind of a neat thing, that our kids will get to be heard on the radio stream if they have out of town family that can listen to them. So I am super excited, and it wouldn't be possible if this council had appropriated the money to enhance our fields. And then, of course, it's Public Works, it's Dominion Power that did the light. I mean, we've, you know, we get help, we just do the easy part of appropriating the money, but it's exciting. So if you drive up around Brubaker, you're gonna see activity. So you're all part of tourism. It's gonna be a great, great weekend. July second through fifth is what the tournament is.
Twenty seven games?
Twenty seven games.
Three days?
Four days.
Three, four, five people they're expecting?
You know, usually, these, they're kind of, you know, all star teams, if you will, and so those teams usually are smaller, like maybe eleven, twelve, maybe thirteen at the most on each team primarily. But obviously, each kid has an entourage. So when you're coming from Williamsburg and two teams from Arlington and Herndon, I mean, they're gonna be here, they're gonna descend on Lexington, they're gonna stay hopefully two to three nights. Every meal they're gonna eat out, but they better eat at the Palms and McAdoo's. But no, they're gonna, they're gonna absolutely just, you're gonna see them everywhere, is my hope. So pretty exciting.
Well, the games they play on Fox Field and Amper Bay's field.
Yes. So for example, on, let's say, on July fourth, when you're coming for breakfast at nine o'clock for me, a game will start at nine o'clock on one field and nine thirty on the other field. And then they'll basically, a game will start, I mean, the games will give them about an hour and a half or two, and they're just gonna turn over, and the Raro staff will be dragging the field and spray painting, you know, the mound and the bases. I mean, it's just gonna play into the night. I mean, the games will start at seven o'clock, the last game usually. Pretty exciting.
Three, three W Z is going?
Three W Z is going to partner.
Who's following the game?
I do not know, but.
Boy, are you serving out?
No, it will not be me.
Volunteering?
But there's actually, it's pretty cool. I mean, it's Cal Ripken baseball, it's sanctioned baseball. And so there's also an app that folks will put on their phone, they can follow along the game, they can see the pitch count, which is a very important thing for twelve and under. Use baseball to see the pitch count, the warm up times and everything to keep the whole tournament running smooth. So it's gonna be a great, great presentation of Lexington that our staff is leading with the state, with the state representatives.
With the concessions, where will they be housed? Very question.
I am not.
Concession stand.
We have been working on that and cleaning that up. I'm not sure if that's where I am selling out, to be, to be honest.
Be in the Brubaker.
Yes. We have been loving the pavilion that Council of Raro helped, you know, get on and all the volunteers and bring Mullen and city, you know, VMI cadets, everyone that helped put that up, that is just, we couldn't be happier with that, the outfield fences, the padding on the backstops that we put up. It's awesome.
Great. Good.
Not to take away from the concession stands at all, but had you not thought to maybe notify Kenny Burgers, something so close by, so they can have enough food supplies.
We better give them a heads up, because it's not, you know, they like to run out. They always run. Yeah. Good point. Thank you.
Fantastic. Very exciting, and for those of you who are looking for something to do over the Fourth of July holiday. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Threshold that on June eleventh counts again on June twenty fifth. And the information that I have is all about the process, especially the application process eligibility and those kinds of things. And it's gonna give you a lot of soundbite types of information. One of them is that we would likely at some point need to do an M O U between the city and the E D A. We will also need to review and establish more guidelines about contractors, and where they start their involvement in the process. If a repair is far over budget, we may have to look at another layer of funding decisions to be addressed by city council and or E D A to make recommendations to us. For example, if we use fifty thousand dollars or we use seventy five percent of an assessed value of a house, just throwing out numbers, not those numbers, just throwing something out. If that's established number is our limit, what if a project goes over the limit that is established? Another thought was that seventy eight owner occupied houses were noted in the survey. They will be possibly invited to come to like a listening session and as well as have area agencies invited to that. We will develop a brochure similar to the one that the group did for the fire suppression program. And we're still reviewing the information needed on an application to ensure that we're receiving the information that we really need to determine approval for the program. And we will likely ask for basic financial information, mortgage statements, proof of property insurance, who the members of the household are, et cetera. If a household has to move from their residence during some phase of repairs, we may need to bill hotels expenses into the cost formula unless that homeowner's insurance have that type of coverage. Because anything that we do is voidable, we will have to add a FOIA statement and its definition to the application. This is a result of much discussion about the client's private information versus the required public access to our meetings and the discussions and minutes and so forth. We're discussing the scoring process for applications. Scoring could be based on a number of things, household composition preferences and the order that that comes, such as veteran preference, families with children, households that have elderly and disabled, use of the windshield survey scores, safety, unhealthy conditions, the order of an application arriving, cost of repairs, emergency repairs, or any other special circumstances or a combination thereof. Our goal is to use objective criteria to ensure our homeowners receive the help for the safety, health, welfare, and prosperity of our city residents and our neighborhoods. The planning department has a great deal of input to help to input already, now to help them developing the final draft process for review. The bottom line is that we should be ready well in advance of our rollout in New January, twenty twenty six, and it's getting more and more exciting as this falls into place. And the next meeting is July twenty third at our city hall on Nelson Street, at four PM.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Any questions?
Decided to see the homeowner helper get some traction and moving forward and look forward to helping the neighbors in need.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, one other thing that we talked about was potentially having a contingency with built in, where we hold back a certain amount of money, you know, just in case some of the projects come in, you know, they find things as they're doing repairs and renovations that we didn't anticipate. So we don't have an exact number on that, maybe, you know, unfit to the budget, but we'll, that remains to be seen.
Having done some home improvements in the past, contingency is inevitable.
I think one thing we actually talked about was trying to maybe have find out what the industry standard is in terms of what is held back for contingency.
Any questions for council members? For my report, as a matter of business, would like to bring forward the name of Michael Perry for the architectural review board. A R B has a vacant alternate and is alternate number A. And the term that is unexpired is set to expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty eight. And I had a chance to speak with Michael, he saw his application, very highly qualified with his art background and high energy and eager to get involved in the community. And so I offer his name for consideration. Make a motion to appoint Michael Perry to the A R B until June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
Thank you.
Have a motion, and a second. Any discussion? Very now, we'll have a roll call vote, and just spoiler alert, Julie Goyette and Barbara Crawford, June of twenty twenty six are the next folks, the next seats for A R B. And hope they will continue to serve, but got a year to wait on that. Roll call votes, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And as far as some items for your knowledge, number one, I wanted to recognize Mike Lennon, who's a Lexington area resident, who's involved with Purple Heart Homes. And if you're not aware of the organization, they're a national organization, and it was founded by two veterans who were injured in their service to our country. When they came back, were having a tough time simulating to their community. And they found themselves meeting with other veterans who had been injured and finding people that had difficulties with mobility who needed something as simple as a ramp. And so they started building ramps for service folks, and it's grown into providing homes for folks all over the country. Locally, Mike Lennon was on the board nationally, but lives locally and is on the local Purple Heart Homes committee. And just one, he sent me some pictures, which I'll happily get to you all, that the Central Virginia chapter of Purple Heart Homes with faculty and recent graduates of V M I and Mary Baldwin resurfaced and replaced the deck for Charmer Hall. Charmer is a lifelong resident of Lexington and a twice wounded combat veteran of the eighty second Airborne in Vietnam. And tomorrow at nine o'clock, they'll be at his house putting in a ramp. And so Rex Rust is the local chapter president, Central Virginia chapter president out of Lynchburg. But just excited to share that story of good things that are going on, and if you know other veterans who may be in need of some support like this ramps or renovations to their home. Purple Heart Homes and Mike Lennon in particular are out there and available in local year probably. Focusing on service to our community, I received a letter from Skip Hess. Skip identifies he is seventy five years old. For the past twenty five years, he has been organizing and leading the candlelight procession of tree lighting, and this year is no different. However, after this year, he's retiring and turning it over to Logan Davis. But I wanted to recognize Skip's dedication and commitment and encourage you all to give Skip an attaboy next time you see him. And also mark your calendar for November twenty eighth, Friday, for the procession of Christmas tree lighting. Additionally, earlier this week, had the opportunity to attend the Walkabout Outfitters twentieth anniversary celebration. It was in their shop, we had ribbon cutting, and it was terrific. A piece that was very meaningful to me. Some businesses trying to make things complicated, and the owners, Tina and Kirk Miller, pointed out that their mission statement is very simple. Encourage happiness. And with all of their staff there and their family, it was really cool just to see all of them light up and encouraging happiness with shoes, shirts, socks, stickers, whatever, load your boats and stuff, but excited to see a terrific business that they identified their business plan was, I think I'm gonna start a hiking store. And here they are twenty years later. So congratulations to the Millers. If you've not been to the Woody Building, I encourage you to make some time and go walk through the hallways there. Habitat for Humanity, Department of Social Services, and some other businesses are located. But it's also the warehouse, if you will, for the Woody family. And there are several terrific pictures of Lexington and car shows that took place and things from the, I think, the sixties, seventies, and maybe some of the eighties, and some, I think, back in the thirties as well. But great pictures of our main street, and I was in there today visiting Habitat and blown away with the really, really cool pictures. The last item I have to share with you is for those of you who had other obligations, obviously, and did not grudge softball match between the Maury Service Authority and Department of Public Works took place on Monday evening. And Department of Public Works represented the city very, very well by thrashing a stud supplied Maury Service Authority. There were teenagers that I know don't work the Maury Service Authority that look like guys I've seen on the R C H S baseball team. But D P W, led by Chris Woody's pitching, won fifteen to four. But the highlight of the night was the award presenter that was none other than Jenny Hoster. Jenny and Jane made a great presentation and congratulated the folks with D P W. So congratulations to all those folks that it was pretty fierce competition. This was no easing around the bases. They were hustling and some hard shots to short stops at second base.
It was, it was over in about an hour, right?
I think so.
Oh, I showed up, but they were like holding up the trophy.
Best time to be there, best time to be there. So thank you to all the folks that participated in that, and it seems to grow every year, and great, great way to spend a warm summer evening, and I'm not aware of any injuries that took place, which is a good thing. Unless you all have any questions of me, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I had four items. I was gonna bring up the Silver Sun Pump. We've retained the Silver Sun Pump, it's in M S A and the city. So the second most important thing to happen in Public Works, we just found out today that we did get an over eighty six thousand dollar grant for the Morse Creek exploratory work that's been done. We found that out today, and we will be working on a briefing for city council in July to give you a status update on what's going on with the soil samples and the exploration as well. But it's very nice to get fifty percent of the, of the cost of this assessment only paid for through the state, and we appreciate that sense.
Second, I wanted to not let D P W have all the limelight. I just wanted to point out two examples of excellent police work with Lexington Police, since we're in their building. We, L P D Detective Sergeant Burks and Corporal Curry worked with other agencies to provide warrants, discern warrants on the two suspects for our recent batch of car larcenies, and they have been apprehended. So you know, they're going to the judicial process, but from our perspective, for the city, they've been resolved. And then the second bit of larceny news, we had a downtown business got broken into and two ships worked collaboratively at L P D patrol to figure out who the suspect was, obtain a confession from them, and return the stolen property to the downtown business. So not as exciting as the Silver Sun Pump, a little bit, but it's excellent police work, and I just wanted to recognize that. And then finally, L F D had an exciting week with two items. One, I sent the email about some construction that went awry at Washington Lee. An individual jackhammered into a thirteen hundred volt electric launch and survived, which is good, but that caused outages at Washington Lee as well as burns to the individual who was recovering. And then, secondly, yesterday, L F D had responded to a fire in a barn with ninety six bales of hay. And so they were there for five hours fighting that. Only the ninety six bales were only exceeded by the temperature, which was higher than ninety six. So, but everyone was, was well and great work on L F D's part with their partners. Happy answering questions.
Who were awarded the grant to help with the Morse Creek study? Which agency?
It is Department of Conservation and Recreation.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let you know that the other, Mr. Carroll, he sent me a photo of a bull elephant the other day and remarked that he was a chill guy. So that was the first and probably most important piece. Thank you, Ms. Strong, for bringing up the changes that Mr. Glazer and I have been working on to the subdivision of site plan organization. That is something that will be coming to you in the near future. You guys probably all know that there is never actually time between. You guys probably all know that there is never actually time between the end of veto session and July one. To draft and consider an ordinance properly. And so you always wind up a month or two late when I already tried. There are a couple of other pieces that I think Mr. Madigan's contacted me about that I think Mr. Carroll has been working on. I know that Mr. Carroll has, I'm working on some of the utilities and land stuff because that's my love and what I do very well. He has some other matters which I believe he's talked to you. And either this Mr. Carroll or the other Mr. Carroll has talked to you or briefed you on some things that are otherwise going on that I've tried to. Keep temps down until Jeremy gets back. Happy to answer any questions.
Any changes on the fours in these?
I have not heard back from Jeremy. He did very briefly mention it, but I did not hear that there were any issues. It seems to me that it was something I didn't need to worry about.
Okay, please, we will read the.
Yeah, my understanding.
We'll be fine.
The law actually.
There were.
Any other time? Any other question? Hearing none. Go into new business discussion and consideration requests for allocated opioid relief funds for the Hope House.
Thank you, Mayor. The city receives opioid settlement monies. They are restricted and they get it, they go into a separate forced account. And we have two entities that are eligible to receive them in our area. One is the Hope House, which we have supported in the past, and the other is the recently established Rockbridge Recovery. And the Rockbridge Recovery Court is funded through about May from allocations from. Rockbridge County primarily, but also Punta Vista and the City of Lexington. They're hoping to obtain other grants that will get them all the way through the remainder of FY twenty six. But they have about a six week gap. So we collectively, the three entities are, are holding back a little bit of our opioid settlement money. To make sure that the recovery court has what they can get through the balance of FY twenty six. That said, the City of Lexington has been supportive of the Hope House in Punta Vista. And they have asked us for financials for. So I recommend that we contribute fifteen thousand dollars to the Hope House. That would provide much needed support for them. They are facing budget cuts from trying to allocate federal resources. This will still leave several thousand dollars available for the City of Lexington to allocate later in FY twenty six. To either the Hope House or Recovery Court or another entity if there is one that is available. So I think this provides enable of provided Hope House support, they need, while also holding back a little bit of power it takes to even have this support. I recommend approval of the settlement.
I make the motion that we appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to the Hope House or the opioid settlement fund. Motion and a rule in seconds. Any discussion? Roll call votes. Mr. Zebra?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Betts? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Also alert you that right now. About a year ago. Lieutenant Youngkin was in front of visiting a recovery house that we've been dedicated to conduct. And Carolyn Noward, who's third of my team, was on her staff. And I came in with Carolyn saying, well, I'll just swing by Lexington, go have lunch at Kenny Burger's and meet one of the Hope House. And Governor's wife seen that. Got a great idea. Fact saying we'll take under advisement and feedback and touch, much to my surprise. Three days ago, got an email that we're on the. Mrs. Governor's, Mrs. Johnson's agenda for Monday at two P M. She was accepted by this at the Hope House. And she's a big advocate for recovery and mental health. Good stuff. Your schedule allows, it's a public meeting and anticipating that she will be there, have a great reason or. Much like the governor, the schedule can change at any moment. Also an opportunity to welcome home Carolyn Noward. Next item is the appointment of a representative to the Shenandoah Valley Partnership Board. City Manager.
City Manager serves on this board. I'm happy to continue to serve Shenandoah Valley Partnership Board or defer to another person. It's up to you if it's by me or to step forward and exerting people's rights.
Soon everybody's familiar with this, but Shenandoah Valley Partnership, an economic development organization. Does have tremendous amount of time demands for the board members. The House member that would like to, I'm happy to. Have you served if not? That was a motion, I'd say. Have a motion second, who was in? There's plenty of discussion about roll call votes. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Betts? Mr. Zebra?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. And I'm fifteen down to three. Discussion and consideration of resolutions to award the assessed project's special inspection inspector. You mean?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we awarded the contract to R L Bryce in January and it was underway and going very well, especially with prior weather. Throughout the project, we need both geotechnical services, which are already in field now being provided, as well as special inspections that are outside of informal expertise. So we did an R F P for the building official. For the special inspections, Snodl Engineering, the firm, sponsored the R F P. So we recommend approval of them. They're a credible firm. And the resolution before you recognizes that the city already has a contract with Snodl for the two of that services. And together, the two contracts are in excess of a hundred and six thousand dollars. So I wanted to make sure that we're clear about that. There's two separate engagements combined is a hundred and six thousand six hundred dollars. Budget that we laid out for all regarding entities in January had seventy five thousand dollars allocated inspections. This is obviously in excess of thirty one thousand six hundred dollars. So our recommendation is we put the use of contingency line out of a hundred and six thousand six hundred dollars. The contingency lineup has been utilized throughout the project, as you know. We're in a meeting today with D S S for all the parties of D S S, including our architect and the contractor and our underrepresented. And with the chief orders that we have either approved or anticipate. We still will have, even after a privilege Snodl Engineering allocating some of the contingency, we still have over five hundred thousand dollars. Most of the risk in a project like this in terms of needing the contingency is in the side for itself. So while the pace of the, of the use of the contingency is something to be mindful of. We think it should, should reduce as the project goes virtual. Happy to answer.
Just one question, just in the next few days or week, or do we just be sharing an update on the Route eleven bike lane project? Is it on the schedule? If there have been any issues? I think today there was an issue. I think they may have hit a fiber line, accidents happened. But I mean, but just, I think the main thing is that it's on schedule.
I can do that. My supervisor, Matt, he asked me if they were having a meeting today, which may have been huge because of the fiber line. But it should have enough.
Right, yeah. In the next week or so. Thank you, Tom. Looked like they were pouring some sand off. It's amazing the tight area that they're working. What do you have? Wondering how they'll accomplish it. When we have items like this, this additional expense and tapping into the contingency, how are we communicating that with our partners?
Via email as well as both the county administrator and city manager for Punta Vista are in these fortnightly meetings that we have. Full of them, they're at the table participating. Jennifer Powell is working on it. Providing us already, advising the project tracking budget. Full transparency.
I just want to make sure that we give everything properly to our partners. Any questions or ask for your consideration?
Approved resolution forty point five dash zero seven, authorizing award of the bid and execution of the contract documents with Shenandoah Engineering. Special inspection services for the Rockwood Area Department of Social Services building at twenty five C J Moore Stride in Punta Vista.
Have a motion and a rule in seconds. And I want you to figure out, we'll take on it. Any discussion? Here in that roll call vote. Mr. Betts?
Aye.
Mr. Zebra?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for bringing that forward and making continued progress on that project. Next item on our agenda is closed meeting, but two items. One, before we go into the closed meeting, we want to order the Monday. We're going to the purpose of addressing personnel matters and to deliver a review to our city manager and do not plan. Don't have any action other than adjournments when we come out for the closing session. And for those of you who have it in the back of your mind or made it part of your mind, tonight is Janie's last meeting. And we want to take a moment to recognize her and offer a couple of gifts. Before I do, I ask the county members if they have comments, observations or statements. You don't have to, but if you do, I'll welcome that as a time.
Been great working with you. You're a very professional person and we're seeing you every other Thursday night. And we're glad that, you know, you're staying with the city and the fans and they can take.
I'm just glad that you've been saying, stay close to the city. And when she said that that's what she's going to do, that works for me, I'm right around the corner. You can see her anytime. I love it.
Jane, thank you for learning all of our unique personalities and putting up with all of us. And anticipating those of us that are needy in certain ways or just anticipating what we're about to email you and providing it before we even ask. It's a talent. Thank you very much. I think back, I think you've been serving citizens of Lexington for eight years. And, you know, a part of that was COVID. And the way that you stood up our meetings during COVID. So that we could take on some challenging issues when we think back to those marathon, five hour, six hour meetings, it seemed. Where we read hundreds of public comments over the course of all of you. You made that happen. You did it so that we could accomplish what we needed to. And that's just a small, small part of what you did for us. But COVID, you, you brought the city to the twenty first century with the technology that you did then and then it just continues to happen.
Community is the better place. Dedication and passion.
I'm looking forward to seeing you on the tour.
I'll be taking my family with me.
Baby, the many gifts that you showered us with and kindness and grace and graciousness. We were certain in that. Very proud of the work that you've done and the education opportunities that you're taking advantage of and progressing. Couple of gifts that we'd like to share with you. First, I'd like to offer proclamation and resolution recognizing Janie Hostetter for her exemplary service to the residents of the City of Lexington. Whereas Janie Hostetter began working for the City of Lexington and serving citizens of Lexington in two thousand seventeen. Initially serving the planning and development office. And whereas in April two thousand seventeen, Janie became the support specialist to the city manager's office. And whereas shortly thereafter, Janie was promoted to executive assistant to the city manager, assuming the role of department counsel. And whereas during her tenure as part of council, Janie earned the designation of certified news reporter in two thousand twenty two. And whereas Janie served the citizens of Lexington with brief extension by prioritizing the public's access to information. Through the weekly electronic newsletter, maintenance of meeting minutes, robust social media posts, web presence. And use of the internet to stream and archive meetings. And whereas while serving as part, Janie provided exceptional support to the mayor and city council. By scheduling meetings, organizing information and maintaining important records and official action. And whereas Janie is leaving the service of the City of Lexington, she instead served the most important residents of our community. The students of Lexington City Schools starting July one, twenty twenty five. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lexington City Council, by virtue of the laws of Commonwealth of Virginia. Can hereby express our great appreciation to Janie Hostetter for her exemplary service to our community, the residents of Lexington, her coworkers. And the mayor and council. I invite all friends and families assembled here and in our community to join me to celebrate her achievement of service to Lexington and her profession. Adopted was twenty sixth day, June twenty twenty five. Okay, congratulations. But wait, there's more. Also, we have a memento, a clock that reads, Janie Hostetter, thank you for all of your time. To proudly display and utilize. And then a note and gift from all of council. Here are all these with you. I'll reassemble here so you can take it home conveniently. But congratulations. Thank you. Really appreciate your time and talents and thrill that you will be going too far away. And welcome any rebuttal from all of you.
It's an honor to your choice of the house. Basically grew up in this position. So thank you for a lot of things, including Jenny D. Horner, that she was. Thinking of the love and their appreciation and have the best health. All that. I'm always so proud to have my chairman, Raymond Popovich. You serve the city very hard, but I have to say.
You've had the best work. I've been here small pretty thrilled.
We know that the city council of the City of Lexington, in this closed meeting, has filled the majority votes. Through the D S S thirty seven eleven A one, to discuss and consider the city manager's assignments, appointment and performance. Supervising and managing the city department heads with other department reports. As well as the assignment, commitment and performance of both department heads and director of reports.
But you don't go to the closed session right now, so we don't know.
Well, if you say, any questions, I'm not necessarily right this minute, but.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're thrilled to have Mr. Aligo representing on the M S A.